Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone that is with us in council chambers this evening, as well as those that are joining us on Zoom. We will move right into our agenda this evening. Are there any agenda changes?
I'd like to make a motion to have the swearing in of our new town manager, please.
Excellent. You can do that under special presentation.
Special presentation.
Okay. Is there a motion? A second? Second. Thank you, Maurice. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rodney. At this time, I would like to welcome David Henderson from Venture Church to lead our invocation this evening.
Thank you, guys. I'd like to just express gratitude that we live in a country that guarantees a freedom of religion and not a freedom from religion. And having said that, let's pray. God, we are grateful for the opportunity to come to you under your guidance and under your leadership, and ask that you give this town and its leadership the wisdom that they need to govern well, to love well, to care for those who don't have voices and who don't have power, that they would use their power to care well, to see what you see, and to act as you would act. I pray, Father, that you would not just give them the knowledge that they need to know what is true, but the wisdom to know what to do with that knowledge. That we love you. We're grateful for this town. We pray that you would help us to be a refuge and a light to others around. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, David. This time, may we please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. For we are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We do have a couple special presentations this evening, so I'm going to come up front to do that.
A moment to recognize the tremendous work and dedication of Lee Connor. I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Connor for just a few short months, that I can tell you that Mr. Connor is very much respected and appreciated from his peers and our community. Mr. Connor has been with the town since July of 2010 and has served in many different capacities. His background in finance really only scratches the surface of his professional resume. Many would describe him as a great man of character and a tremendous leader as he truly takes the time to invest in the employees of the town. I would echo those same sentiments. Through many challenges and obstacles that the town has faced over the years, Mr. Connor has been instrumental in problem solving to overcome and move forward with the town's best interest at the forefront. Mr. Connor has served as interim town manager four times totaling 25 months. No matter what position Mr. Connor has been in Harrisburg, he always puts the town first and is dedicated to our community and its core values. As a small token of our appreciation, we would like to present this gift to Lee for his outstanding work, ethic, leadership, and willingness to serve wherever capacity he's been asked to do. And we look forward to working with you many years ahead. At this time, I am thrilled and honored to formally introduce and swear in our new town manager, Mr. Rob Donovan. But before Rob and his family join me up here, I want to share a little bit about his background.
Tell me about this.
It's really long.
Hope it's only the highlights. Don't go back too far.
Mr. Donovan, a current employee of the town of Harrisburg, began his employment with us in 2016 as the town engineer. He has since served as the Engineering and Public Works Director from 2019 to 2021, and has been in his current role as interim assistant town manager since June of 2021. He is a licensed professional engineer in multiple states, including North Carolina and Ohio. He has been an active leader in the public infrastructure arena, both locally and nationally, serving as a member of the APWA and the NSPE, ASCE, current alumni of Leadership Cabarrus and a founding member and former chairman of the Regional Stormwater Partnership of the Carolinas. Mr. Donovan has nearly 20 years of experience in public infrastructure, engineering, and local government management. He began his career in the Ohio Department of Transportation, serving in both the environmental planning and the highway construction departments. After receiving his Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering, Mr. Donovan served as a regional traffic engineer for the engineering design firm of Burgess and Nibble, where he gained an appreciation for private sector management and the blending of engineering solutions to local government needs. Mr. Donovan then transitioned and became the deputy county engineer of Mahoning County, Ohio, and service superintendent of Rose City, Ohio, where he handled all aspects of county management, city engineering, city services, and infrastructure maintenance and expansion prior to joining the town of Harrisburg. Mr. Donovan has served in many elected positions, appointed to local government roles, including the Board of Directors for the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County, Cabarrus Rowan Metropolitan Planning Organization, Chairman of the Regional Stormwater Partnership of the Carolinas, the Ohio Public Works Commission, Chairman of the East Gate Regional Council of Government, and Vice Chairman of the Portage County Land Bank. He also served as both councilman and mayor for the village of Wyndham. Mr. Donovan has a deep passion for volunteerism and public service and has dedicated the vast majority of his career to improving the quality of life and communities he has served. When he is not in the office, you can often find him coaching youth basketball and volunteering in many roles within his church. Mr. Donovan has been married 20 years to his beautiful wife Deanne and his three children Bobby, Eli, and Emily. Rob, would you like to come on?
I would.
Family, would you like to join?
Stages?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Donovan, do solemnly swear.
I, Robert Donovan, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewithin.
Not inconsistent therewithin.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As town manager for the town of Harrisburg.
As town manager for the town.
So help me, God.
So help me, God.
Very fitting for an engineer that this took place on Pi Day. So next, we will move into this portion of public comments. This is where anyone wishing to address town council may do so during this comment section. Please state your name and address for the record. Be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said. Please keep your comments about the subject and not personal in nature. We will first go to the signup sheet that we had, and then we will see if there's anyone on our Zoom meeting that would like to speak. First on our list is Thomas Stiff. I hope I'm saying that correctly. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stiff.
I just have a couple questions to ask.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Thomas Stiff, 605 Autumn Drive, Harrisburg. When does the, when does the city of Harrisburg consider an area residential? And then the other one, how can a residential area become a commercial without being rezoned?
I'd have to defer to Rob on that question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, and we are, we are on mic, right? Not whole, whole, okay. I think it's, that's a long and complicated answer, and I don't want to give you, you know, just drone on, but, you know, if you circle back with our planning director, he could kind of direct kind of more specifically to what you're trying to get at, because we have all kinds of long-range plans, short-range plans, small-area plans, and those kind of drive what the zoning is in a certain area.
Being that I live at 605 Autumn Drive, I would like to know if I, I'm living at a residential area, which is all houses and everything, or in my, in a commercial area.
We'd have to check the zoning map. I don't have it in front of me, but certainly our, our planning director, planning staff could, could get you that map and let you know, you know, what permitted uses are allowed on those properties.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stiff. The next name on our list here is Morgan Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Morgan Johnson. I'm at 4664 Lucas Court. And a few of my neighbors were here in January to discuss paving or getting help with paving Lucas Court. We just wanted to get an update. If there was an action item, maybe there was.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I'll defer to Rob to answer that for you.
Get almost much action as she shields tonight. I'm feeling, I'm feeling good. And, and, you know, Mallory Hodgins, who's our project manager on that, is, is in the room, so feel free to correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, but we've, we started the survey. So that was, that was funded by the council at the January meeting, I believe. So we went out and, and secured that firm, hired them, and that's where we're at in the stage, getting the plat, which they'll have to contact all of the property owners to get you guys to sign that plat similar to the meeting we'd, we'd had in our office there at Public Works.
Okay.
So I'd have to, you know, get that plat, get the actual right-of-way dedicated to the town. Everybody would have to sign off on that, and then we'll move to the next stages of
Okay.
construction design, doing the tax assessment, which it was going to be a 20-year, 50% assessment on the properties. So all of that will be in the later stages of it.
Okay. Should we look forward to a time on when we can all get together?
I would just refer you back to Mallory, and she can kind of get, get with you guys and let you know the schedule and
Who's Mallory?
So.
Okay, perfect.
And, and I think Mallory has your contact info, but if not, I'll follow her tomorrow and make sure she does.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Those are the only names on the signup. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak during public comments at this time, before we move to our Zoom participants? Is there anyone on the Zoom chat that would like to make public comments? I do not see anyone online that requesting public comments. So thank you very much for those that spoke this evening. Next, we'll move to our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented? Motion to approve by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Oh, sir.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is passed. Next up, we have our communications, and we'll start with our town manager finance monthly reports.
And as far as the town managers, it'll be, it'll be pretty brief. I'll save my, my comments for the issues as they come around, but just a quick update on COVID and our policies. Most of council knows, but for those in the audience, we've gone to mask optional based on CDC guidance and county health department recommendations. We meet Mondays, every Monday, as the county leaders call. This Monday, the numbers were staggering. I mean, it was really great to see this morning when we got on that we only had seven hospitalizations in the county, which is as low as it's been since June of 2020, and 57 cases in total. So that was really exciting news for us that have been involved with that for a few years, trying to make sure that we keep operations going. So it looks like we're heading in the right direction. We've adopted those recommendations. We've opened up our facilities without any restrictions, as you see by the crowd tonight. And, and that's all, you know, as all things we're really happy about, we're going to continue to monitor that through the monthly leaders call. There are things overseas that are concerning. They're not really here yet, if they are here at all. But we'll move that to a monthly meeting of the county leaders, and we'll kind of break that down to smaller sections if we need to. But just a quick update, COVID in the right direction. We're in our fourth week, I think, of, of no cases and no quarantines for exposure in the town. It feels like a decade since we've had nobody out with COVID. So very happy to report that. And like you said, I'll save my comments for the rest of the agenda items and turn it over to Brian, wherever he's at. Perfect for the finance report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to give James a second. Get to the back of the room.
Is that on?
I'll see them.
Is that mic on?
All right. So, thank you, sir. This is your finance report for the month of February. So first, with our revenue and expense dashboard. As you can see here, the revenues for operations at the top, the general fund is up to 89%, which is up 10% from last month. And that is based in majority from our tax collections, which have reached 98% for the year. So we're very, very happy with those collections. We have a couple more months of vehicle taxes to collect and a little bit more on our real property, but you'll see this percentage tick up to about 101, 102% over the next couple of months. So very pleased with our collections there. Water and sewer fund and storm water at 65 and 66%. They have fallen back just a tick from the 67% that we're looking for, and that was just due for, for water and sewer to the winter months. So as we come in, into irrigation season, that will pick back up and hopefully get us a little ahead of our target rate. And storm water is right there within one point, so no concern on revenue there. Our departmental expenditures across the general government departments are all looking really great, ranging from, you know, 30 to 61% there. So it's a no real concerns. You do see one down arrow at human resources, and that's because we approved the budget amendment for the salary study, but of course, haven't spent that money yet. The remaining general fund departments and the enterprise fund departments are all also in the green, so I won't spend too much time talking about these, but everything looks like it's in great shape after eight months of the year. And salaries townwide at the two-thirds mark of the year is at 61%. We'll move on into our project dashboard. These are our facility infrastructure improvements that are considered single-year projects. I'll point out a handful of them, the status of them. The deputy office expansion, we've held that at 40% this month. We did remove the old unit that was in bad shape, so that's gotten out of here, and we have brought in the new mobile units, and they look a lot better. So we just need to get the utilities hooked up, get those kind of finished up on the inside, and we'll be ready to place those in the service. The land for the fire department is up to 95% now. The asbestos has been removed from both of those houses. There was a little bit of police training that took place in those homes here recently. And our next step is to do burn training. And when that's done, we'll just demo those and have our safe lots for the next couple of years. Our ADA sidewalk program is also at 95%. There's just a couple finishing touches to do on that, and then that project will be wrapped up this month. Let's see. The landscaping phase two, towards the bottom of the schedule here in Harrisburg Park, that was moved to complete this month. So all the landscaping and all of the minor projects have now been finished up at Harrisburg Park. These are our multi-year projects in design. Most of these are just standard couple percentage points per month. But I will point out that Sequoia Hills and Millbrook Pump Station are both at 75%. So we hope to have those getting bid and rolled over onto the construction tab by the end of this year. This is the multi-year construction projects. The sidewalks for Caldwell Road are at 92%, so those should be finished up this month. And then the 2021 water lines are at 95%. And then our elevated water storage tank has moved up to 100%. So that is fully online and in service, and both the new one and the old one have been painted and branded. So that project has been a pretty long time coming, but that was one of the strategies, was to give it a longer window to get completed so that we would save on, on the cost of the project. And so not only did we accomplish that and have a lower cost than you might have anticipated heading into the project, but due to some of the, some of the delays in the project, we've actually saved another couple hundred thousand dollars. So that couple hundred thousand will flow back into the capital reserve and go to pay for some of these other projects on the screen. Our equipment projects, we have moved mostly everything to 100% complete here. We got the blower for the tractor and parks and rec and an excavator, both placed in the service this month, that one for water and sewer. So that takes all of our projects, equipment projects to complete, except for a generator, and that project's on hold and will not be completed this year. Vehicle projects, we do actually have some progress to report this month, unlike most months. But we did get the van for IT. We got a truck in engineering and then two trucks in water and sewer. All of those received, all the accessories and outfit items and places in the service in February. The remaining vehicles that you see in yellow are all related to fire. Obviously, the ladder truck's going to be in this building stage for the next year. And then the remaining vehicles that you see up there, we have an agenda item. The last item on the agenda tonight, Chief Dunn will be asking for budget modification for these remaining vehicles here. In our professional services projects, we've completed these for the year. We have the one on hold that we're going to convert into more of an economic development plan as we round out the year, but no projects to report on here. For the remaining finance update, as I'm required to give you this ARPA update each month, there hasn't been any change from the last time you've seen this. So we have about $4.5 million left to appropriate of our ARPA funds. And for a budget season update, we have completed three different draft one workshops, as you see there, and we have two more upcoming. The last draft one workshop will be engineering, streets, power bill, environmental protection, water and sewer, and storm water on March 23rd, so that will be a big night. And on April 4th, we have our draft two budget, which will be the first time that we all get to see the balanced budget. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Just a few mayor comments this evening. This coming Sunday, March 20th, I will be presenting a diversity proclamation to the multicultural nights that they're meeting to be held at Harrisburg Park. This proclamation is to recognize the Harrisburg Multicultural Festival Team's efforts in caring and giving back to our diverse community through education and events. I also want to thank the Harrisburg Cowboy Coaches. It's our football, youth football league, that are volunteering their time during this offseason of youth football. They have been running a free conditioning program for the youth of all ages and all sports for years, and the response has been overwhelming this year with kids from Harrisburg and surrounding counties taking part. They meet on Sundays at 4:00 PM at Harrisburg Park, unless otherwise noted on their Facebook page, which is Harrisburg Football. So appreciate those volunteers really stepping up to, to help condition those youth. And again, that's for all ages and for any sport. We'll move into council comments. Are there any council members that wish to make?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, I did.
Hang, hang on one second, Rick. We forgot fire and sheriff updates. Did anyone want to come up? Chief Dunn, do you want to present an update for fire? Okay. Sure. Daryl, would you like to come up? Sorry, forgot two of our very important service folks this evening.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Williams with Harrisburg Patrol. Mayor, council members. The numbers for last month, officer initiated were a total of 3,117. They were dispatched, 325 calls for a total of that month, 3,442 calls. Security checks for last month were 2,351. Traffic stops for the month were 438. Our non-emergency response times, that's non-emergency, no blue lights in Sire. In Zone 87, which is pretty much on this side, a veterans' bridge, five minutes and 56 seconds. On the other side of veteran's bridge is a little longer, 13 minutes, 47 seconds. Total Harrisburg unit response time was seven minutes and 55 seconds. Any questions?
Thank you, Sergeant Williams, for the update. All right, so we'll move into council comments. Are there any council members that wish to make a comment this evening?
Several I'd like to make, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody into the chambers. It's so good to see you all here and not wearing masks mainly. So I encourage you each month and every month to come back and, and join us. You're always welcome. You're able to reach out to us through emails and phone. Next, I'd like to congratulate our new town manager, Rob, and wish him the best and I look forward to working with him over the, the next several years. And then on to Lee Connor and the work that he's done for us over the past year during this time. It's duly noted, very much appreciated, and the town was under good hands during that time, so thank you, Lee. Last month, I was able to attend the county commissioner meeting, and they wanted me to be sure that I pass along to, to council and to staff, congratulations on the Sharp Award. For those of you that know, our public works facility were awarded one of the high, high public safety awards. And so the county commission has recognized that and wanted it to be passed along and said, "Good work, Harrisburg." All right. Also need to get tonight a couple of updates on Stallings Road as it relates to the roundabouts. I keep getting asked those questions. Are they going to be done this summer? Or are they not going to be done? And then need to know when the raging And then need to know when the raging ridge one's going to be done. Does the Nixon property have to? What has to be done in order for the Nixon property to start? And then when will the light at the end of Stallings Road and Rocky River start? Is it like thirty percent, thirty homes that have to be raised before that light goes? So those are a couple of questions to to get answered, so I want to finish and get them all out to you at once. Also during Lee's time, he gave us a spreadsheet that was very helpful in his monthly in his weekly reports, he gave it to us during the month, that showed how many homes in Harrisburg had yet to be built. They were approved, but yet to be permitted. I'd like for us to be able to get that on the website and that we add a column that says these homes were approved, rezoned for approval, the conditional rezoning was done. What date that was, the month and the year for a residence? And then if we all also can have a key at the bottom that explains to the residents what it actually means permitted versus not permitted versus approved. Just, and I know that's updated monthly, but I think it'll be something very important to them to to know where we are and how many homes are are coming and yet to come. Last Wednesday night, I was at the Sustainability Advisory Board, so they wanted, they were they had presented that the Cannon, I believe it's the Cannon Foundation, there was going to be a grant for Arbor Day, five thousand dollars to plant trees, and then the town was to match it. I believe Rob had sent out an email saying that the the funds had been there to be met, to be matched. But I wanted to make council aware that during the meeting, they determined that they needed a little more time to get the website up so that they could be ordered, because what they do is they're ordered, sent directly to your home. So the town kind of just stays out of it. They're just furnished the other five thousand that the Cannon Mills or the Cannon Organization grant provides that money. They determined that that would push the date out to like the first week or past in April, and that would be past optimal planting time. And if you're going to go through all this time, you want to be sure that it gets, that the trees that you plant do live. So they have requested that that happen in October, and that will give them more time to educate the public, get the website ready. And the grant, Cannon Grant, has agreed that as long as the funds were provided in the calendar year, they were okay with it. Now that'll push it over in our fiscal year, so I need town to, town staff to to get with sustainability team to to figure out getting that requested. I think, I think that's it.
Thank you, Rodney. Is there any other council member that would like to speak this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Council. Yeah, congratulations to Rob for being a town manager and Lee for taking over every time we've asked him. He's done a great job. I sent an email to council after the last budget meeting when we had a discussion on the town center rezoning or going back to the PUD, and I just wanted to bring it up when we are at a council meeting where the we are the council has always been transparent, so I'm going to be transparent, because I don't think it was. I don't think it should have been done at a budget meeting. So I'm just going to give you a little overview of what I think, and then that's it, not ask for any feedback, whatever you guys want to do. But there was a meeting that everybody wasn't privy to, Mayor Teague, Councilman Patrick, Councilman Smith, Rob Dunn, Lee Connor, Shu Shri, and David Henderson, his assistant, about putting the PUD back and not letting it wait until June. Let's put the PUD back, and him and Rob got into a back and forth about Rob said you got to go through council, whatever, so they, the mayor brought it to us after a budget meeting, which I thought was a little bit abnormal. My ten years, never had that happen, it's always come in front of council, so a lot of council members on council always want to be transparent, so that's exactly what I'm doing. So there was a vote, four to three, Councilman Smith, Councilman Dellinger, Councilman Price, and Councilwoman Kotel voted for it, and Councilman Patrick, Councilwoman Diamond Stanton Williams and myself voted against it. Everybody knows why. It's prime property. I think we should have done an economic analysis study, but the thing that bothers me is everybody didn't know what was going on, so it seemed like to me it was like a backdoor deal. And whether it's done or not, it's another story. I did have some calls from people in town center. We did promise them before some unions were on council, we, when this, when Tony Jane came up with it, a lot of people didn't even want it until we told them it would make their housing value better, and now all of a sudden, this has gone down. So it is what it is. I just want, I just want to be transparent with the residents. That's what this council wants, so everybody should know what happens at council meetings, not only at budget meetings. But there's one thing that I want to, I want to say, when Councilman Dellinger ran two years ago for council, on his election size, he, it was really
May, point of order.
Yes.
It said residents
We're not going to call out council members.
And that didn't happen on this issue, so. But all four council members that voted for it lived on the other side of the tracks. So I'm the only council member on this side of the tracks, so I guess it's all right when it's on this side, but it's not all right when it's on Stallings Road on your side. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. And to be clear, that was all done at a public meeting. All of our budget meetings are open to the public. There was an agenda published, and the background on that is the developer requested that it expire to PUD. They requested that it be extended. Council extended it. They requested that it end instead of automatically terminating in June, so it did not require a public hearing.
Yeah, I know, don't reply to public hearing, but it'd be nice to do it when all town can hear it and see it. There was twenty people on that day. It doesn't really matter. I know what happened. I've been on, I've been around a lot enough, but that's fine. It's good, but another daycare comes, and I think that anybody was was involved in that church or David Harrison helped get elected, probably shouldn't have been in our vote. That's another story. It's already taken, it's already done. I just want to make my point.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
I want to make a Alteen, yeah, this is on a separate issue, but recently we had that accident, the bicycle accident right down the is this on now? All right. So the, the bicycle accident that happened right down the street here, and I had residents ask me as far as and I don't know if that would have helped, but the lighting around this area seems to be insufficient. It seems really dark, especially if you go from this building to like La Unica over there, and just, it seems like at nighttime, there's not enough lighting, so that's something that maybe we can look into and see if that can be improved.
And our Was there another accident?
Yeah, there was. I think that it was at the intersection.
At the intersection, the intersection of this little
Just front of Lot Unica.
Yeah.
Like on Roberta Redd.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can get back, you know, in more detail on that. There's, there's I'll look into this one specifically, you know, to see if there's anything there, but in general, there are some options with town center lighting if that was the cause.
Yeah.
If it's not the cause, there's still some options with town center lighting. It's just a matter of cost benefit. You know, traditionally, town center has put lighting in as it's developed. So some areas are very well lit, some areas are not, and then we have some areas that are out because they don't have connectivity to the areas that are currently being installed. So once the current areas are installed, we'll know exactly, you know, what we can connect back and and how, but even then, there may be some lighting deficiencies, because all of the areas that aren't developed, don't put streetlight, we don't put streetlights in there until they develop, so. But we'll get back to you on some, some options there.
Yeah, that it does seem like it's been improved. It used to be where there was way too many bushes there, and you couldn't even pull out without being able to see well. So it seems like there's been an improvement there, but perhaps a little more lighting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kotel. Any other council members wishing to speak this evening?
I have three, three things. So Youth Council was able to meet with Big Brothers, Big Sisters at their last council meeting. And on next weekend, on March twenty-sixth, they have the ability to form a team and be a part of the bowling team, which is going to be exciting for them. The cost for this is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for six members, the executive team, to be able to form a bowling team and raise funds for Big Brother, Big Sister, and three, I think, of the executive council are big, big sisters for other Cabarrus County students, which I think is very important, so they're high school big, so that's important. The second thing is a follow-up question for the mayor. I know I sent an email in January from CHA with Mr. Lewis, who is the diversity and equity person, and seeing when they can present their equity information to council into the tank.
He responded back when I reached out to him and just sent the information to kind of be reviewed. I don't think he was requesting to come to present it at council. That wasn't the email I received back to him.
Yeah, that's what they were trying to do.
Okay.
That is, that was the initial purpose, so you could see the information, and we could go ahead and schedule them to come.
We'll take a look at that.
And then, three, following up on Councilman Russo's comments, I do think that we all have to be very transparent in what's going on, making sure that information is flowing back and forth between all of us to be consistent and provide all members of the public with information. I think that's important, so. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Anyone else? Okay, we will move into our public hearing section of tonight. We do have four public hearings on tonight's agenda. I would like to make mention that no motions on these four items will be made tonight, and final consideration will be made at the April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two town council meeting. So we'll get started with our first item, and I will turn it over to Cecile to present item A, which is the zoning and annexation to add a portion of parcel to modify the previously approved Farmington PUD.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first public hearing in front of you tonight, as you mentioned, is to consider rezoning and annexation to request to add a portion of the adjoining parcel to the previously approved Farmington PUD. So the request in front of you is to reason a portion of parcel, pin number is listed on your screen. The total acreage to be added unto the previously approved PUD is one point five five seven acres. So as you can see on the screen, the previously approved Farmington PUD, the case number for that was H twenty nineteen oh two R. The property to be added to this PUD is currently in the county and will require annexation as well. So tonight, we're doing public hearing for both annexation and rezoning. The current zoning on the property in the county is OI, Office Institutional. The requested rezoning is PUD to the town, town designation. There is an overview of where the property is. Under top right-hand corner, you can see general location, the blue polygon basically denotes the town boundary. On the left-hand side, a little closer look at that diamond-shaped parcel is that one point five five seven acres that will be added to the previously approved PUD. This is another look at that property, this gives you a better view of what that parcel to be added or a portion of the parcel to be added looks like. After this agenda, there is another agenda in front of you, which is H twenty twenty-one fourteen R. These are both related. I just wanted to highlight that this agenda is about adding a parcel into the PUD and annexation. The following agenda will be taking a portion out of it and taking it off the PUD, so they are interrelated. We had to take them as two different items, but wanted to bring that to your attention as well. From a land use perspective, if you look on on the screen there, the star, you know, it's where where the property in question is, it's in our mixed-use center intended to be the mix of retail, restaurant, residential, service users, you name it. So that's where we wanted that vibrancy and density from our planning. The the proposed change is not, the proposed addition of the parcel is not going to change that intent. So all of the uses that the council approved in the previous PUD remains the same. Every conditions, every notes remains the same, so we're not changing any entitlements, we're not changing any standards. We're simply adding a parcel to make that out parcelable, out parcel more buildable than what it is today, which is why the amendment is is in front of you tonight. The neighborhood meeting, as required, was held on this matter on November eighteen of twenty-twenty-one. As I noted, the proposed site plan amendment is consistent with our adopted Hella mixed-use center and the standards of the UDO. This was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board at the February fifteenth meeting. They did recommend that council consider approving the request, but as Mayor noted, we're not taking action tonight. Tonight is is a public hearing, so we're requesting the council open a public hearing, close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back for action on April eleventh. With that, I'll hand it over back to you for any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Cecile?
Cecile, I think this one in four B goes together, so you know, it's kind of hard to know where to answer the question. Is this being initiated by the developer, or is it this being initiated by the persons and the other property?
I think it's a joint effort, and I I'm going to let the applicant speak to that. It's it's driven to us by the applicant of the PUD. But my understanding is the property owner where the property is being added from requires consent, so the annexation requires their signature. The rezoning also requires their signature, so it's a joint effort.
Anyone else? Bridgette, did you want to?
Okay. Yeah.
Good evening, Bridget Grant, Land Use Consultant with Morin Van Allen. I'm here tonight with Jim Merrifield with MPV Properties. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. It is a land swap. It's essentially helping create two developable parcels by us trading out basically a one and a half or one and a half acre swap. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Bridgette.
Any comments?
Go ahead.
You said the neighborhood meeting was held. What were some of the comments from the neighborhood meeting?
We actually didn't have very many in attendance at the neighborhood meeting. I think the only thing that was discussed was some of the proposed tenants that we anticipate to have in Farmington. That was the number one focus and concern.
Thanks, Alteen.
Well, why Mr. Merrifield's there, maybe he could go ahead and give us an update on Farmington. You know, we'll take this opportunity and see if you've gotten that main anchor in yet.
Good, good to be with you again and in person. So we continue to work hard out at the site on the infrastructure, and if you've been by there, you can see things are really shaping up. And we're very near completion of the phase one infrastructure, primary roads, and right now, we're putting in the streetlights, the pedestrian lights, the street trees, the walking paths, all those things are going in, the primary roads are virtually complete and waiting for the weather, put the top coats on. The residential builders are nearing their start time on their vertical construction. They've been doing the site work on their sites to enable them to go ahead and start building the residential units. We've been working hard on the commercial portion. At this time, we have a number of commitments primarily up at front. You know, because of the COVID and the changes in the retail world, it's been very difficult to get the commitments we'd like to have. But we're bringing forward a new plan for the town center portion, a new plan, a more detailed plan of the town center as originally envisioned that would enable us to move forward with the vertical construction of the town center by the park that is being put in. And we do have some of the out parcel users that, and I think we've met about some of those in the past, that we have Chick-fil-A and a multi-tenant retail building up front. We have a a commitment from a famous toastery breakfast restaurant to go up near the front, and we're working on other other restaurant users to go up there. But it's a, it's going to be a long process to build this whole project out, and we want to make sure that we get the quality that the town wants and create the kind of town center that's really going to be a lasting Uh, town center that's really gonna be a lasting and successful project. Danielle?
Thank you, Mr. Merrifield.
I just want to clarify that when we say town center, we're not replacing this town center. It's there, there's this concentration of that mix of. Commercial and retail service uses in Farmington, which we're referring as town center for Farmington.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person first and then take comments from those joining via Zoom. I do not believe we had anyone sign up. We did not have anyone sign up um, in person. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak on this piece? Don't see anyone. At this time, the public hearing is now closed. And we will move on to B.
So the next item in front of you again is, as I noted earlier, is related to that land swap we talked about. Uh, this is. A rezoning request where we will be removing a portion of the PUD, existing PUD and taking it out of the PUD. And assigning uh, a town zoning district. We're not taking it out of the town limits. It will still stay in the town limits. Uh, the property in question, the pin number is listed on your screen. Uh, the total acreage is one point three eight acres. That will be taken out from the previously approved PUD. Again, the, the goal here is to amend that, to make that out parcel a little bit more buildable. The property, as I noted, is in the town limits and will remain as such. Uh, the, the request of rezoning from PUD to O I Office Institutional. Again, here is uh, just the location map for you on the top, top right again, that overview map and on the. Left-hand side closer look at that square red parcel, which will be taken out of the PUD. Another look there, uh, that green parcel is what we're talking about, one point three eight acres that will be taken out of the previously approved PUD. And, and put it back in the town limits, just under a different zoning classification. Same map as I showed earlier, so don't want to repeat again. Just again, it's part of the land swap where we're adding one point five five seven acres into the PUD. And taking out one point three eight acres out of the PUD. The mixed-use center again from a land use recommendation, uh, I just don't want to repeat that again. It just, it, it does meet the intent. Uh, it does not go against what we had planned for the Farmington area. Uh, the uses that was described in the PUD up an approval of this rezoning, that all of that standards. That went with the PUD will go away and the O I standards will apply with that for that one point three eight acres. Uh, neighborhood meeting was held on the same day. Uh, staff finds it consistent with our Hella and the U D O. Planning Board also recommended uh, approval by the council. Uh, and staff is requesting that council open the public hearing. Hold the public hearing, close it tonight and we'll bring it back to you uh, for final action on April eleven. Have to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council?
I was at the P and Z meeting, but it was O I before it became.
Before it became PUD, that is correct.
So you're just going back.
We're just going back, yes.
Okay.
To be consistent with that area, so yes.
Thanks.
So there's no change in the T I based on the documentation that I read, but if it's Office Institutional, that plot on the edge. How tall can that building be? And would it yield more traffic going back to Office Institutional that which would require a change in the T I?
So that, that you're talking, you're referencing one point three eight acres going to O I? So any, any, anything that's gonna happen on that land will need to come back to us. So we'll go through the rezoning or whatever site plan review process. So there is not an automatic. Approval of a project by this action. They still have to bring it to us if the project triggers a T I, we'll go through that process.
But it's still saying annexed. It's still staying in the city limits. It was not before.
Correct. That one point three eight still stays in the town limits. The idea is giving it back to their adjoining property owner is they can build it as part of that bigger parcel that is there today as O I.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from council? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to this here in person and then take comments from those on Zoom. I don't believe we have anyone that signed up in person for this one either. Um, is there any? Yes, David, come state your name and address, please.
David Henderson. I uh, currently live on Wonderwood Lane. Uh, in Harrisburg and I, my question is to process because we seem to be um, very interested in transparency. And when recommendations like this. Um, town and board, planning and zoning specifically, as well as economic development. Uh, when those recommendations come to council. Um, what does that include? What process does that include? And is the same person um, looking at this from a planning and zoning standpoint about do we follow the? The, the identified rules? Is that, that the same person that also evaluates this from an economic development impact? And if so, I would really like some conversation about why that person is in the same seat. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there any other in, in person? How about on Zoom? James, do you see anybody? At this time, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move along to item C and Cecile is still up for us.
One more public hearing for you tonight. Uh, all of these are relatively minor compared to what we've been used to bringing. Uh, so this public hearing is. Related to the annexation request. So uh, the, the property owner wanted to. Get sewer access from the town and to get sewer access, it needed to be part of the corporate limit, which require annexation. And to annex a property, we have to assign uh, town zoning classification, which triggered the rezoning request. So the two parcels in question off of Paul Linker Place are listed on our screen. Total acreage here is four point two, three, three acres. Uh, the property is located off of Farmill Road. The property again, as I noted, it currently is in the county, will need to be annexed. The current zoning on the county is L D R, Low Density Residential. The requested zoning uh, would be R L, Residential Low Density to be consistent with the town's uh, classification. There's a property location map. If you look on the top right corner, you can see where the arrow is, the marker is, does not have the blue. Boundary, which means it's not in the town limit. If you look on the uh, left-hand side, it's a little closer look that shows the underlying county zoning and those two parcels in red. This is another look at the parcel, just to give you the dimensions of those two parcels. From a future land use perspective, it is located in a very low-density residential area, which is intended for uh. Rural setting, single-family, large lots. Um, the proposed annexation and rezoning does meet that requirement. So if you look at that table, uh, the corresponding future land is from a very low-density residential and the middle column. You can see one of the uh, recommended zoning district is R L. So the requested rezoning in front of you is, is consistent with that. Uh, neighborhood meeting was not required for this because you're, you're not up, up zoning, you're down zoning. Or you're similar to what's there today. So in those cases, for something minor like this, we do not hold the neighborhood meeting. The proposed rezoning, as I noted, is consistent with the Hella and also all the dimensional uh, standards are in, in line with the town's U D O. Planning and zoning board did hear this uh, request and approved or recommended approval by the council. Tonight, you're not taking any action, but holding a public hearing, closing the public hearing and we'll be, bring this back to you uh, for final action on April eleven. Back to you, Mayor.
Are there any questions from council or Cecile?
So Cecile, this is only for sewer and not water.
That is my understanding, yes.
All right. Can you go back to the map and tell me where the closest sewer line is and how they'll be? Will it be coming off of Farmill? It's not a Linker place, right?
There is a, I believe it is back creek that runs behind the property. So they'll be tapping into that.
So, and they have to pay from that property all the way to that line, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I, I can chime in a little bit. Want to go back to the, to the flat map, uh, Cecile right there. So this, this is a, a real estate um, type situation where the father is gifted. Uh, and the Linker family's been fantastic about this. So the father's given two children pieces of the bigger property. They've subdivided it. They actually own a business where they could do this type of work. Um, they're installing, you know, large diameter concrete pipe and, and Charlotte all the time. So. They actually have sewer on the property, but it's a Wausack line. Um, Wausack's not a retail seller, we are. So they have to actually extend the line. For us to tap into Wausack, then they'll have access to sewer. Um, our issue is we require you to annex to have our utilities. As evidenced by all the large subdivisions that always come knocking on the door for our utilities. Um, this is literally for two houses. They'll have two connections. Come from the house, connect to a manhole and then into Wausack. But it won't be, it'll be on an easement that already exists on their property. There's not like a long extension of public sewer here. This would probably be. Twenty to fifty feet of public sewer extension at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? At this time, we'll open for public hearing. We did not have anyone sign up in person on this item either. Is there anyone on the Zoom call that wishes to speak on this item? At this time, the public hearing is now closed. Our final public hearing this evening. We will turn this over to Lee and Rob. It's on the Harrisburg Code of Ordinance Changes.
And I think we're gonna turn it over to Rich to get how to do, do this once.
Yeah, they turned this one over to me.
Welcome to the party.
Thank you. This one's a little bit different from the last three and um. This process actually started um, almost four years ago. With the General Assembly asking every town and every county in the state to submit to the General Assembly, to a commission up there. Of all the ordinances that we had that had a criminal sanction attached to them. And in Harrisburg, we had a, a general uh, provision that actually made every one of our ordinances. Uh, you could have a criminal sanction to it in addition to a civil one. So it was set up that way. In fact, most of the cities across the state have the same kind of thing. So um, I'm not sure what was really going on up there, but they wanted us all to submit that. So, so we did that back in two thousand nineteen. Um, submitted like an eight, nine-page report of all of them uh, to, to the General Assembly. And everyone else apparently across the state had to do the same thing. So, so that was the last we heard of it until last year in um. Um, in September, when the, the General Assembly passed a omnibus crime uh, bill. That dealt with a lot of different things. And this was one of the, the provisions in it was that if you had, if your. Local ordinances had a criminal sanction to them, meaning that you could charge somebody criminally uh, with a violation of the ordinance. That you had to um, had to separate it out and put that provision in the, in the actual ordinance. You couldn't just have it in a general. Uh, a remedy provision like we did before. So, so that's what we had to go back and do and to comply with that, that, that new um, um, bill. It was actually um, Senate Bill three hundred, which has now become a state law or excuse me, session law, two thousand twenty-one dash one thirty-eight. And it dealt with this um, provision, but also dealt with a number of other law enforcement matters that have nothing to do with this. So that was the part that actually applied uh, to the, to the town. So um. The town asked me to go back and, and try to rework our ordinances um, in, in, in line with that um, that bill. So that's what we've done. That's what's in your packet tonight. Now, to give you a little bit more about that, um, the way, the way I did it was basically to basically keep what we could. Um, as a criminal sanction from what we had before. Um, so the way it's set up is that every ordinance that we were allowed to still have a criminal sanction, we, we kept that in there. Um, so that applies to most of them, except for the ordinances that the, that the bill um, or the, the law said we couldn't. And most of those are, are in planning and zoning. So anything that was in the um, the um, U D O. That dealt with planning and zoning that had a criminal sanction, uh, you can't enforce any of that anymore. So it's, these were just our general ordinances that are in our code, uh, that they, that these apply to, that are in, in the packet. So um, so basically um, in Harrisburg, we never did use that. Um, I mean, it was in there, but we never, uh, uh, at least uh, for something that was initiated even through planning and zoning. We never would charge anybody criminally. It was always handled civilly. And most of our other ordinances, it was handled the same way, civilly. Now, uh, the sheriff department may, may be able to tell you some of the ones that they may um, look at criminally. It may be a, like a noise ordinance or maybe some sort of parking ordinance, but they would, they could answer that, but it's very few. Most of ours is whenever we do something that's in the way of enforcement, it's always through, through civil action. Which would be for either filing a lawsuit and um, and asking a court to give us an injunction to stop the, the, the um. Whatever is a violation of that ordinance. So that's what we've always done in the past. So this really didn't um. Affect anything that happens in Harrisburg on a regular basis. So basically this was done to comply with the law in the state. And this is pretty much along the lines of what I think everybody across the state is doing. Um, so um. That's really what it amounts to. Uh, and like I say, the biggest difference um, from, that was in that law was that you couldn't um, enforce any. Planning and zoning ordinances through criminal. And so we can't do that. We never did do that here in Harrisburg. So. It's not any change for us. And apparently that's what the issue was at the General Assembly somewhere else, not here. Um, that they were enforcing their planning and zoning ordinances uh, through a criminal sanction and it must have created some problems. But that's how it came out from what they originally asked it to, to uh, to turn into. Uh, I say everybody across the state had to do the same thing. So, so basically this is uh, changes in our ordinance. That, that allow us to comply with the state statute. That's what's in your packet.
Thank you, Rich, for reviewing that and making sure we were in compliant. Are there any questions from council for Rich this evening before we move into public hearing? At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Again, we did not have anyone that signed up in person um, to speak on this matter. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Thank you, James. At this time, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move right into old business and we have a discussion on transportation bond review and I believe Mallory will be presenting that this evening.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, sorry about my voice. The allergies are getting to me this year. Um, so tonight I want to talk about the transportation bond funding package that many of you are familiar with from twenty seventeen. So I wanna um, really be specific on this presentation on what it's for. Um, so we're gonna recap what's been done on the twenty seventeen transportation bonds, provide an update on the remaining funds. Give an explanation on why some of those early projects were discussed, haven't yet started, and then introduce some of the upcoming projects and their proposed budgets. So we'll, I'll recap the original plan first. So um, one of the main goals we wanted to accomplish with the original bond package was road resurfacing. Um, we've resurfaced approximately three and a half miles of roadway costing the, about a million dollars. Um, we've also constructed and are in design on various sidewalk projects throughout town. Um, five hundred and fifty thousand was allocated for Harris Depot, which is complete Stallings Road, which is in design currently. Um, expected to begin construction later in the fall, but it'll be um. We want to time that well with the uh, residential developments along Stallings Road. So it'll connect um, Camilla Gardens and Harmony. And then the sidewalk connection on Caldwell Road, which takes you from Harrisburg Industrial Park Drive to Ace Academy. So what's going on with the roadway improvements? Um, the Tom Query and Caldwell Intersection, Caldwell Road Extension and these other intersections that are listed. So we had originally. So we had originally allocated about 2.35 million dollars of the bonds to roadway improvements. First one, Tomwell, Tom Query and Caldwell Road. Staff finds this is functioning very well as a four-way stop. We only spent about $10,000 to do that. We'd done some preliminary engineering studies on putting in a traffic light there that was originally discussed due to some stormwater issues and some some other things that were going to make it a little a little bit more expensive than the original estimate. We decided to leave that as a four-way stop for a little while. The Caldwell Road Extension project, we completed the feasibility study in 2020. The desired effect was achieved. We spent about 65,000 on that feasibility study. And by desired effect, we have some significant developer interest in that area. The Tom Query and Robinson Church intersection, we were able to pass off onto the developer. And there will be a hundred thousand dollar town affairs per contribution. Roberta Road and Main Street is pending town center redevelopment, but it is expected that that cost would be passed on to the developer. Similar situation with Rocky River Road and Robinson Church Road. That'll be constructed, but with a developer contribution and a town caution. So with the 2.35 million dollars remaining, and I want to be specific that these these proposed budgets will include the issuance fees. We'd like to do some additional funding for greenways, construct Hickory Ridge Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk and implement the Highway 49 corridor plan, which is one that staff is really excited about. And what that would entail is installation of masked arm traffic lights at Roberta Road and 49 and Main Street and 49. We're estimating that to be under 800,800 is a pretty conservative estimate. And then we would implement some proposed improvements from the corridor plan, which I'll get into a little bit more. So as for the greenways, the Bat Creek Greenway Project, which is one that staff has been working hard for several years to get off the ground. Unfortunately, we're hitting a standstill with the Water and Sewer Authority of Cadiz County, Bat Creek Interceptor Project. They have delayed construction of that project, although my understanding is that they're permitted and fully designed. They will not begin construction until some of the capacity issues at the Rocky River Treatment Plant are addressed. But there are a lot of other greenways and our Greenway pedestrian plan that was completed in 2015 by the Parks and Rec Department. So we're shifting our focus a little bit. We want to look at Rocky River Greenway and some of the missing connections between new neighborhoods. For example, the Auburn subdivision coming in off of Black Welder is required to put in a greenway. We're looking at making a connection there. And then it's just been, it's just been a really strong push. So I just want to give a shout out to all the departments, finance, admin, parks, and then of course, engineering and public works. It's been a huge team effort. And I I don't include it in the writing on the screen, but the the one we're really pushing on right now is a connection to Town Center with the Davis Creek subdivision and the Harrisburg Village subdivision. Davis Creek is dedicating Greenway easement, and then Harrisburg Village has actually already constructed their Greenway. So we'd like to put a plan into motion that would connect that and allow from for pedestrian access directly from Town Center. Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk is one that I've been trying to get kicked off for a while. There's some difficulties there with just the right-of-way widths and then some interesting terrain issues. But we have a preliminary alignment for this sidewalk, and we have we had a kickoff meeting with Kimley Horn to assist us with design and permitting. They were selected from our 2019 transportation bond request for proposals. So the key priority for the Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk is going to be creating a safe future connection for the Bat Creek Greenway when it does come. We'd like to be able to get, you know, from Hickory Ridge Road to the Bat Creek Greenway, giving us a pretty big loop, about two and a half miles from the future Stallings sidewalk that's in design right now, Raging Ridge Road, which is already constructed, and then this last leg of Hickory Ridge, so it'll create that kind of triangle of sidewalks. It'll also get you to Highway 49 at Town Center using the Harrisburg Veterans Bridge pedestrian facilities. So it really gives our community some walkability. And then lastly, you know, the one I mentioned that we're all pretty excited about is the Highway 49 corridor plan. So she'll and Timmons Group had done a lot of work on this and presented the final study, I think it was last spring. So we're coordinating with the original design team, which was Timmons Group to create construction and bid documents for this project. Our main priority is going to be the section between Roberta Road and Main Street as our kind of phase one for this project. And we're going to bid all of this at once to get some economy of scale. So if kind of circled on the screen, the green sliver right there. This project will entail closing the left turn into the Food Lion. We would be planting that median, you know, grassed landscape median. I'm not sure if we're going to get be able to get trees. I'm trying to talk to the NCDOT and see what they'll allow us to do there. But we'll definitely make it look nice. And then the second part of this is an extension of Financial Way from it's between McDonald's and Sherwin-Williams. So what that'll actually do is rather than sending a lot of that additional traffic, you know, we don't want anyone cutting through McDonald's parking lot. So this will get them. There's already existing town right-of-way there. So this is kind of a key piece to make that connection. It'll give us some green space on 49 and break up all the all that concrete median. And then the last, the last two pieces of that are installing masked arm signal poles at those two intersections, Highway 49 and Main and Highway 49 and Roberta. This is not in our town, but I just wanted to show kind of what those look like. At Highway 49 and Roberta, we do have some existing pedestrian facilities crossings, and then the push button for pedestrians to get across safely. We'll be doing that at Main Street as well. So in conclusion, we are really happy with the progress that we've made so far and the first chunk of spending that's already been completed. We've turned out some high-quality projects, and we're really excited about the momentum that we have on the other projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Any questions?
I wanted to just just add one comment, the existing Stallings Road project before Councilman Smith chokes me, but that that project, we narrowed the limits early on because there were funding issues. We narrowed it down to Rage and and this money would also be used to extend that back out to the original limits and pick up that additional neighborhood of flowers, which is where it was was going to go originally. So we'll we'll wrap that in there, although it's not specifically called out here.
Sorry, in my mind, it's connecting those two, but it will it will extend on and connect the
Right, the north side of the road there has it wide open. So you know, it's something we've talked about. And I I just really want to thank Mallory and Brian for Brian Lee for putting, you know, all this stuff together. I think the transportation bond project has been kind of spinning its wheels for for a while, for a good reason, because all of our projects we wanted to do, we got developers to do as part of their rezonings and their conditions, which is great. It's a great problem to have. It saved the town almost two million dollars on getting other people to pay for these projects that we were going to do. But it left us with the issue of what do we, what what meets our goals, what meets our values with that additional two million that we have here? And we we think that these are projects that we can actually get done quickly. And the other things that are still outstanding, we still have people kind of lined up to assist with those projects. And when we think about the Caldwell Road Extension or the Morehead West Sewer, those are projects that that we think will have strong support on from the private sector rather than, you know, trying to do like a design, but no build on those projects. I was, you know, thank, thank you guys for all the hard work put in there. Although we don't, we're not really looking for motions or anything tonight. We just kind of wanted to get feedback on anything that you guys had.
There will be some upcoming motions. I'm going to bring a lot of these contracts before council in the coming months for design and construction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
So could I just ask a few questions? I'm sorry, you were going to run off. I don't believe I was on council when the previous council went through this. I believe they worked on it for six or eight months. I believe I was on council when we voted for it. But the four-way stop at Caldwell and Tom Query, which is is working great as is, it's really not even that bad at kind of peak traffic times. What does concern me is that when Farmington opens up Farmington Parkway, that's going to dump a bunch of traffic trying to come in town from that way, because that will now be a second access, more or less, into town from 485 and on the way back out as well. And I'm not saying we should leave it. What I'm saying is I want to make sure that if if that happens and when that happens, it's not another eight to 12 months period where we're trying to get something going when we basically have it in place now. And that's my concern with that one portion. I have another concern with the masked arms, but you can.
I just want to quickly add, there there is a potential project behind Caldwell Park that is in Mecklenburg County that City of Charlotte is working on. We we reviewed the TIA. If that project goes through, then they have potential improvements that's going to make that signalize intersection.
Just wanted to give Signalize it because at one point it was a roundabout.
At this point, I think they're looking at signalized intersection. If that project moves through
There's sewer right there.
Correct.
That you couldn't do the roundabout.
So we have, we do have opportunity for that.
Okay, I just don't want to get down the road and go, wait a minute, we could have done this, but
Right, and I think we That's a great, I mean, it's a great point. And I think what we'd look at is all the opportunities there. Like Sushil said, the the signal's being considered, but DOT thinks a roundabout works better there. Just because the, if we think about that location and the reason the four-way works is because most people use it as a roundabout. They don't really stop completely. Sheriff Department can can earmuff, but but they've used to, you know, that people have adjusted to it. That's what drivers do. And because the traffic is directional, there aren't a lot of conflicts there. So in the evening, you're going one way. In the morning, you're going the other. DOT's concern was that its signal actually has a longer wait time. Because you have people actually sitting for a red light and backing up deep in into into Charlotte, really, is the is the big queue that we get there. But with with Farmington, we'd probably get a bigger queue on Caldwell Road, you know, heading heading southbound. So when that happens, you know, we'll we'll look at our opportunities there. But currently, as it stands, a signal would add congestion there and back it up more. And so whatever, whatever we add to there, I'd want to look at all our options, not just a signal, because I'm I'm concerned that it would it would back up even if we put a signal there.
Yeah, and if, you know, even if you consider the left turn, you've got the sewer problem. So you're back at the same issue that you had.
And we have a roundabout. Yeah, we have a creek there, so there's a big environmental concern.
On the masked arms, we all know that intersection is just a nightmare, and it's frankly dangerous. It's like every, it's like three or four serious vehicle accidents a week, it seems like. And I don't know, I know that it was a transportation bond, and this is what it's for. But is that the best use of the taxpayers' dollars not to seriously consider some major changes at that intersection as opposed to just beautification with masked arms? I mean, surely, if we're going to spend that kind of money, we can do something to make it safer, improve the traffic. I mean, I'm all for masked arms. I I think they were great. They get rid of the cable, you know, the overhead power lines. It makes it a much, you know, cleaner look, and it it's welcoming. But how can we, how can we say that we're going to do that before we do anything else at that intersection?
I was the same way with the mast. I wasn't a big fan of them. I kind of were. Councilman Patrick is on that same situation. I I would like to see if we couldn't go back to DOT and see if there is some type of suggestion that could be presented for that intersection.
So I I think there's there's separate issues, but we can combine them. So the transportation bond, like Councilman Patrick said, this is what it was for. So from a staff standpoint, that's what we're, you know, looking at and what we're pinned in. If we want to pivot and change directions, we can, but there's a, there's several problems that would be presented to us with that. The transportation bonds have a deadline. So these need to be issued and spent. If if you don't, I don't, I'll let Brian tell the apocalyptic thing. I don't, you know, I don't understand it as well as he does, but you don't have a forever horizon to spend these. Anything that would happen at 49 and Roberta to expand, one would be probably in the five to 10 million dollar range, because you're going to have property takes, widenings, maintenance of traffic, all of that. So this money could potentially, like when I look at it, I think, well, this would be a good local match. This would be a good, you know, we put our 20% in and we lobby NCDOT to you to get the 80% from the feds to do something here. But it would be that that's a long process. It's a more than five-year horizon. And I don't think this money is a good candidate for that.
So i- if we're shifting, could you shift masked arms to parallel? And I'm not saying it's all masked arms in parallel. What I'm saying is address the issue in parallel.
Yeah.
As opposed to
We could shift it to any to any local project. We we've got some good ideas that are that are cost-effective on parallel that wouldn't be. I don't think it'd be in this range of dollars, but we'll we'll be bringing that to you in the budget process to discuss.
I mean, I just don't want to. I don't want to, you know, start digging in the dirt and everybody's like, oh, great, they're finally going to do something about this intersection. And I have to turn around to them and say, oh, no, we're just making it prettier. I mean, that's just not enough for me. I mean, i- if it has to be spent, and I understand the fiscal challenges, but I don't want to, I don't want to have to answer that question without being able to follow up with, but we've got this in the works to actually improve it. And you know, government being government, we're going to put masked arms in and for the five to 10 million, they're going to tear down and move 20 feet when we actually do widen the road. But I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but when it comes back to us, you know, I'm not sure I'm going to be happy with it if it doesn't have some component that tries to improve that safety.
Yeah, it's a legitimate public relations concern. And and like you said, this is something that government gets in the habit of doing. But it's not our facility, and that's where we get. That's where we get our hands tied. And I I think in the future, if we do more transportation bonds or or things like that, it's a it's a thought exercise that that needs to be done on the front end rather on the back end, where we're deciding, are these projects viable in the timeframe that you have to issue these and start repayments? And do we own the facilities to make those decisions? Because right now, that intersection, although it's very dangerous to us, it's our most dangerous intersection. But it's not our intersection, so it falls way low on DOT's priority compared to the I-485 interchanges and and things like that. So it is a problem, and it's something that if we do it, we'll have to be prepared to say, you know, why are we not improving the safety because we have no ability to.
At some point, don't the safety numbers start making it a priority for them of crashes per 100,000 or whatever the metric is?
Yeah, I mean, eventually it it would if it reached that level, it could be looked at as a safety hotspot for HSP funds and a certain amount of of funding for that. But we'd have to look back. The last time I talked to their traffic engineer, it wasn't close. We just don't, we we have a lot of accidents there, but they rate them based on severity. So, you know, unfortunately, you know, those with with actual injuries rate a lot higher than those with property damage only, which is what we get a lot of property damage, very minor injury as to where some rural intersections have, you know, fatalities at them, and they have real low traffic counts. So those are considered worse. And then the roads that have much higher volumes, they just end up with much better impact for the dollar. Understood.
Just so you know where I am when this comes back. All right.
We did get some preliminary feedback from NCDOT too, and we'll be working with them really closely with this. So I'll, you know, make the push that safety is a priority for us at this intersection. One of their concerns was the turn, the left turn capacity from 49 on the Veterans. And they kind of wanted to eat up some of our, some of our green median with some more turn lane capacity. So we're going to try to figure out the most optimal balance for that.
If any other council members have, you know, comments on the masked arms themselves, please send them over to us while we look at this, because I think if we're not going to do masked arms, that's a chunk of money that we could do something else. I just don't think that something else is a spot safety improvement at 49 and Roberta. We might be able to move it to something more beneficial. We've looked at that because that was identified to us as a priority to do the 49 beautification.
So for the new council members, I mean, I knew what it was, but I don't know that new council members knew what you're getting and what costs. When you said masked arms, you know, I think it was $800,000 number being floated around, and we were talking about how many masked arms?
That would be for eight, that's eight total. Yeah. So four for each of us. And the ones at the Roberta and the ones at Roberta and 49 are pretty long. And I based that estimate off of the Farmington masked arms that they got. And then I I tried to pull from some NCDOT projects. So I feel pretty good about that number. Farmington had four masked arms, and they came in under 300,000. So as I said, it's a pretty
And that's how many intersections? And that's how many intersections?
Just just one. It was four total mast arms.
One intersection, eight hundred thousand.
Two.
No, no, sorry. That's for both, both for both our intersections, Roberta Road and the Main Street intersections of forty-nine. I put eight hundred thousand as our cap, and that includes design as well, so.
It it's an expensive aesthetic improvement. I mean, I don't, I don't want anybody to think like this, this isn't going to improve uh congestion. It's not going to improve safety. This is a beautification project where we're adding aesthetic treatments to the medians and to the intersections are two busiest intersections near town center. So that that's what we'd be doing. Let's make that very clear.
If you're saying it's beautification, then I'm definitely kind of.
Yeah, it's kind of a high number to swallow, but when we look at how much we were able to save on um, you know, the Robinson Church and Rocky River Road intersection. Um, and then those other intersections that were mentioned, all those costs being passed on the developer. Um, it it is an expensive project, but uh we we wouldn't be able to do that unless it was for, you know, staff working with those developers and passing off some of those costs.
Are are other options, I think, that are viable. And, you know, we'd have to kind of get into the details, but there there are greenways, there are sidewalks, there's resurfacings, there's uh, you know, parallel, um, but that's a pedestrian, you know, concern as well. There's the uh improvements at uh Rocky River Crossing that we talked about, the stop signs and intersections. So it it would be stuff on local routes that we could design and bid quickly in in one package. Um, there's really not an option to use this as matching funds for large scale projects.
Um, I actually want to go back to that little map of forty-nine, if you could on. Yeah. What I'm wondering, is there any way we can um decouple that back road behind McDonald's from the bigger project and get on that sooner? Because it does seem kind of um a safety concern is just kind of an awkward thing, and everybody does go through McDonald's and then you've got your um drive-through lanes are backed up, so it just seems like a constant issue.
That's a, that's a good question, and that that would actually be very easy to do because it is all town streets. So we um, you know, separating it out from the overall package. Um, it would be a a just, you know, one more bid package, potentially one more contract to present to you guys, but um ultimately, that'd be a pretty easy proportion to split out.
So the bonds were done in two thousand seventeen, this November, that'll be five years. So evidently, really, at that time, we didn't have a a direct path or guidance to exactly really other than Tom Query and and Robinson Church. Fellow council members have spoken very well tonight. And when you look at the drawing, where Councilman um Kotel was just talking, you talk about the mass arms and I see that little greenway with right there at McDonald's Dunkin' Donuts, and we're going to turn it in and beautify it. You talk about the mask arms. The people that voted for those bonds weren't voting for beautification. They were voting for to get the traffic flowing in Harrisburg. All right. So um I know during one of the budget meetings, we talked about and look, greenways, okay, we we're getting money for that, but that's not what they voted for either, is to be able to walk from here to there. They're still in their cars. They're all going back to work tomorrow at a certain company, so they want the traffic to flow. During our budget meeting, I spoke about school circle, and let's start that and go ahead and making that the super road back there to get it off. When we passed this transportation bond several, several months ago, not transportation bond, but this transportation plan, I talked about the side streets. We need to start working on the side streets, so the side streets should come before those beautifications. So if we've got that money and we need to spend it, and I'd like to hear from Brian again to remind the public when the limit is, how we got it, how much we've actually issued, when we've got to use it by, again. But here again, we do have a couple of streets that we can go ahead and work on and think of that traffic flowing for Harrisburg residents.
All right, so we uh have four million in authorized bonds. We issued one point six five last year, so we have two, three, five left. You have seven years on bonds from the uh date of vote to issue those and have contracts in place. Uh, you can, there are ways to extend that out to ten years. Um, but, you know, we're trying to keep it in the original life cycle of seven years. Um, so Mallory and I have been working to make sure that these projects can have a construction contract by November twenty-three so that everything can be done wrapped up by the end of the seventh year. So that's our our timeline there.
And here again, we've issued bonds, or I mean, the first part of the bonds were self-funded, right, Brian?
They they all are.
They all are.
So, yeah, we we will pay back all four million through general uh property tax, our normal revenues.
So I'll look to Mallory or to um town manager, Donum. Is it feasible to use that mask arm money and work on school circle? Are we going to still need a lot of money?
I don't know exactly what the improvements on on school circle are, so I don't want to say it's it's viable or or not, like exactly, like if the right away or utility relocation, those are the things that complicate uh the project in extent. Uh, right away and utility relocation, we rely on other people. So if we could tell Duke, let's say we, it takes us six months to a year to get plans completed for something, even if we're fully funding it, then at the end of that uh design phase, we have six months for right away if you need it. Um, and then you have another six to whenever Duke decides to move their lines, um, which a lot of times drags it out. So meeting that eighteen month schedule is really hard if we have to acquire right away or if we have to relocate utilities. So that's what we're trying to avoid in order to to meet it. Now, there might be uh on the school circle, you know, section, things that we can do there that are just local streets. But if we have to involve N C D O T and go through their environmental process and their acquisition process and their utility clearance, it's not viable.
So I'll bring back also what I've discussed in the budget meeting about opening um Shamrock again. What money improvements can be used out of this to do that, to get the traffic flowing from this side to the other side? You know, the other day I met with a resident and they said, yeah, I don't come across the railroad tracks. I just go to Mid Heel and spend my dollars. So I have, have, I I know we want to spend the money, but here again, just to spend it to get Greenery and Attorney in at McDonald's, Dunkin', and the Mask Arms to have to come back, because we know something is going to be done with town center. And here again, the the traffic around here is really going to have to change. And I, and as I've said before, I don't want us to spend the dollars today. In two years from now, three years from now, we're tearing it up, and the residents are saying, what are you doing? Just my.
This is, this is one chunk of the Highway forty-nine corridor plan. Um, the the quarter plan did um call for these improvements, the mast arms, the closing, closing of that turn light, and then that um extension of uh financial way. Um, obviously, there are other segments along forty-nine that had proposed improvements. The the reason we looked at this one specifically, I'll give a little bit more on that. Um, a lot of the other segments of the forty-nine corridor plan, we're going to be closing driveways. And how we discussed before about just the timeline, um, as we work with those uh, you know, businesses and closing their driveways and reconfiguring a lot of parking lots, we thought this one had the least amount of impact to businesses. Um, because you're not cutting off getting into food line, you're still allowing for that kind of wraparound. Whereas, you know, if we looked at the section between, say, Morehead and Patricia, they're closing. Uh, I think it was like five or six driveways um on those commercial properties. So I I tried to really look at the sections of road, see where we could get kind of the most for the money, make it improvement, uh show a strong push to implementing that forty-nine corridor plan that was voted on and approved while also, you know, getting use of these transportation problems.
Thank you, Mallory.
And I I think I've heard four council members that are that are pretty direct that we don't want to do uh forty-nine beautification with with this money. Um, is there anybody passionate that that wants to continue that path? Because again, this was something that was um, has been, you know, directed of staff for a while. It's been kind of a quiet subject, which is why we kind of did a uh untraditional presentation where we're not asking promotions, but we were looking for feedback. So I appreciate the feedback we've got, because it does clarify that at least as I'm sitting here, I think we don't want to do masked arms. So that opens up some other money, and I've got some things that have been mentioned here, some some locations, and there's some things that staff and I have have discussed uh about options as well. So if masked arms are off the table, that, you know, now's a good time to to rally and say, no, 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 I I love this. Um, please, please do it, because the next you'll hear from us will be masked arms are gone. This money is going to be real allocated to transportation projects that make more of a difference to the traffic, uh be it pedestrian or vehicular, because again, those are, I think that's up for debate. Some some folks are really passionate about pedestrian traffic. Some are more passionate about vehicular traffic, but uh we've got a big impact on both.
Something that was not included in the beautification plan, transportation plan, which have you. Um, and if it's still moving forward, is we have absolutely really no way other than playing Frogger on forty-nine to get anybody from potential train station to, you know, we keep talking about what we would like to see in town center. What's the safest way to get those folks from there to here? Or is that even, you know, within our vision? If we're all.
No, I think there's the signal that that's uh going in at the train station entrance would be where you would, where you would cross and then use the north side of forty-nine to then enter town center. Um, the other connection that Mallory mentioned verbally that we we're kind of looking at is Davis Creek. That is something that wasn't uh a part of the conditional rezoning, but is, you know, another connection to a neighborhood to town center um that promotes that pedestrian traffic and walkability that that we've been trying to promote in town center. So I I think we have some options there. However, this 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 was high on the priority list. This was on the maybe the second cut of the transportation bond revisions once originally, it was all intersection. But those intersections have all been funded. So then the second take was beautification, the forty-nine beautification and and some other things. And, you know, if these masked arms aren't uh a priority, then, you know, we'll move those to something else. Somebody who's a, you know, traffic engineer by training, um, I I agree with you. I don't masked arms without impact to the traffic aren't my favorite thing, uh but they are good for town center and aesthetics and and, you know, promoting the and beautifying your core of your city. So, you know, I gotta take my engineer hat off sometimes and and put on the planner hat and say, these these are good for your community, even though they might not be addressing the the primary issue, which is traffic.
And for staff, what made it that justable to us was that's the savings on the other projects. Um, but I could certainly look at um some of the other uh things we have in our transportation queue. I had, um, we had a, you know, obviously, we had our community transportation plan. Um, I wanted to sit down with Kimberly Horn again on that transportation plan and just kind of review what actionable items the town had coming out of that. Um, I had had a brief call with one of their engineers. Um, we've scheduled another more in-depth call to go over those. I can kind of accelerate that and bring some of those recommendations back to you next month, if that's something council's interested in hearing. Um, would, I guess, I don't know that we have a vote or anything like that. There's maybe some direction. Uh, is the, is the segment here, this highway forty-nine quarter implementation, because total with this project is about one point three million. So there's the the mast arms, but also the road closure and then the road connection. Um, we could certainly move forward with the road connection without the turn lane closure. That'd be a pretty simple project to pull off. Uh, I think I have hundred K earmark for that. We already got the right of way. It's just building a road. Um, I could come back with either a recommendation for the other one point two million um or just eight hundred thousand if we eliminate the turn lane closure, whatever you guys would like to hear next month.
I think we'll keep, I think we'll keep it as presented, and I I feel so bad because you're just losing your voice. I want to keep you up there for another hour, but I think we'll 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 keep it as is minus the mast arm. Take the mast arms out. We'll real allocate those funds to uh transportation projects, either in the C T P or stuff that we've mentioned here, and and we'll take another crack at that money.
A sequence sense nods on that.
Yeah, I mean, don't walk away saying, I, again, I like mast arms. I think they're great. They can, they im- they improve the look of the town. They really take, they kick it up a notch, but at that intersection, we do something else.
And I just want to say thank you for bringing this up because it seems that if, like Brian mentioned, by November twenty-three, we need to have this planned and allocated. That seems like there's a lot of urgency there, you know, much more like, for instance, with the capital money that has to be spoken for by the end of the twenty-four, I think, twenty twenty-four. So it seems that this, we need to focus on this and really kind of get it all planned.
And there's uh staff is very excited about these projects, so, you know, we're excited to keep moving forward on um whatever improvements we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Our final item under old business is the consideration of conditional rezoning and zoning map amendment for Oakview Residential Subdivision off of Hickory Ridge Road. This is behind Bloom Phase Two. We had public comments at our meeting last month. Um, Sushil, I think, is going to present for us this evening again.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so like you stated, this is not a public hearing. This uh public hearing was held at the last meeting. What you have in front of you is the action item to consider conditional rezoning and zoning map amendment for Oakview Residential Subdivision, which is off of Hickory Ridge behind Bloom Phase Two, or what people also refer to as Bloom South. So the request we're using here is one parcel, total acreage is sixty-five acres. Uh, the intent here is to subdivide and build thirty single-family homes. The property is already in the town limits, so it does not require annexation. The current zoning is R E, rural state. The requested zoning here is conditional residential low density. There's an overview of where the location uh map is on the top right. Uh, you can see that uh blue polygon that represents the town limits. On the left-hand side, a little closer look that gives a relationship to the Bloom community that's already planted and can see those parcels and the property in question that is in red boundary. Uh, I'll quickly go over some of the highlights. We, this is the same presentation I gave uh during the public hearing, but we'll go through some of those, and also there are some few changes that applicant made between the public hearing and now, so we'll highlight those as well. So uh as noted earlier during public hearing, so the primary entrance for this uh proposed subdivision will be Cornflower Drive, which is the stop street that was built for that purpose when Bloom South was built. We also have two steps going from this project onto the adjoining property to the east and to the south as required by ordinance for future uh projects that may happen on those parcels. We do have twenty-five foot wide perimeter buffer. Uh, this is a conditional residential low-density zoning, which is from a U D O perspective, this is under the old U D O. It's under same classification for buffer requirements. If we had strictly gone by the U D O requirements, there would be no buffer requirement. But if this is way beyond what is in the U D O requirements, so the applicant was uh willing to provide that buffer to uh address some of the concerns that was raised during the during the neighborhood meeting. We also have a greenway trail to be built and delivered to the town along with twenty-five foot easement for maintenance down the road. Uh, that greenway trail to be built is part of the Reedy Creek uh public greenway that is in our adopted plans. Anytime there is a adopted alignment along a subdivision, we do require the applicant to build and deliver that project for us. Uh, to the, to the north, there is uh around thirty-eight acres that will remain undisturbed and uh will be, will remain as open space for the community. As noted during the public hearing, uh and also included in their packet, there's also um pedestrian bridge that will be built as part of this project uh built and delivered by the project. So town is not putting any money into that bridge, but the applicant itself is. So we will be getting that uh bridge as well. Um, and there are open space and proposed mailbox cluster within those open space within the subdivision as as required. So um at the last hearing, I I believe uh Councilman Patrick brought up the, who's going to maintain the internal greenway versus external. Uh, I think we had intended to have everything north of the creek uh within the town purview that we would maintain it. But since then, we've had, I've had some conversation with the applicant, so we've included that pedestrian bridge and everything uh south or everything on the other side of the creek to be maintained by S O A. So we're not maintaining the bridge. So it will be part of that. So it will be part of that SOA. But the other uh, key element to that is we've also made an agreement with the applicant that, that internal trail that is to be built within the subdivision, even though it's not a public access given to us, it will not have a public access restrictions. So when a preliminary plat is brought in front of you, if the rezoning gets approved, we'll have those restrictions in, in the covenant so that anybody who is wanting to take that access trail to go to the Reedy Creek uh, using that bridge will be able to do so. Um, again, going back to the overall density, it's point four six units, thirty homes uh, on, around sixty five acres. The minimum lot size here is twenty thousand square feet. So it's pretty much in alignment where the council has directed staff in the past. Here are some of the examples uh, of those elevations for uh, Oakview Estates. Going back to how does it align with the adopted Harrisburg area land use plan? So if you look on the map where the store is, it is low density residential. So that calls for uh, low to moderate density from one to two units per acre. Uh, that two units per acre is usually protected for conservation subdivision. So if you preserve more open space, you get to go a little bit higher density. In this case, we're not utilizing the conservation principle. It is a, you know, what do we call a conventional rezoning request? So there's no, there's no minimum open space requirement, even though there is a significant portion uh, north of the creek uh, is, is preserved as part of the subdivision. And going back to the uh, relationship between the land use plan and the zoning, as you can see, the highlighted section there, low density residential. Uh, one of the category residential low density is the recommended zoning district, which is what is being asked for. And then at point four six units per acre, it is consistent with the U D O. Uh, in terms of utilities, they do have access to uh, water sewer, a little cornflower drive. Uh, that service street has a connection there. Um, any, any extends or any, any cost or upgrades needed for that is up to the applicant. The town will don't have to put, put any money into that. We do have adequate police fire sanitation if the rezoning is approved. Uh, and if, if the uh, if the project is built down the road, so that's not, not an issue. A T I was not required uh, because of the size of the community. Um, our ordinance requires that uh, if there is seventy one or more uh, single family homes, then that's when the T I is triggered. It used to be hundred homes. We had changed that a few years ago to make it seventy one. But again, because of the size of the community, it was, it was not required. Uh, this is information only uh, strictly coming from the Cooperus County Schools. Gives you general information on how does this uh, impact the student enrollment? Uh, so if, if Oakview, those thirty homes uh, to be fully built out, it will add two elementary school students, six middle school and eight high school students. How does that translate to the capacity? If you look on the right-hand side, you can see where they are today versus if this project is added into the mix along with everything in the county that Cooperus County uses into the mix. So all the projects that are approved, they've already accounted for, so that future capacity includes that as well. So uh, these are some of the conditions which was uh, included in your packet along with staff reports, site plan and other relevant documents. Uh, I'm not going to read through this uh, verbatim, but the first one talks about the regulations they have to comply by. The second one is uh, regarding the cladding materials, primary cladding not going to be vinyl. Uh, we're also restricting the uh, exposed concrete foundations, so those need to be protected uh, with right materials. Uh, there is condition about uh, replacement of heritage trees. Uh, if, if they're using the wet ponds, we do have uh, those needing wet uh, fountains. And then there's also a minimum depth requirement, so those, those are some of the conditions there. Condition about protecting the uh, detention pond. Uh, we talked about the greenway and then the pedestrian bridge. And also uh, some of the concern that was raised uh, at the earlier public hearing about how does it impact that cornflower drive? So we'll be bonding that, of course, that's the only way to come in and out for the construction. Uh, but that will be bonded and we have construction practices uh, to make sure there is a minimal impact on the subdivision. The mailbox cluster uh, is the next one. And of course, every road design has to follow our engineering design standards unless uh, it's approved separately. There were uh, two conditions added on uh, which were not presented to the public hearing. And these were added after the public hearing, based on the feedback received from the council. I, I don't believe we heard anything from public on this, at that meeting, other than one, one letter that Mayor uh, presented. So condition eleven will be adding is applicant agrees that no fewer than thirty percent of the dwelling unit cell contain a side loaded garage. So they're capping that there will be at least thirty percent side loaded garage within the community. Uh, the condition number twelve uh, talks about that rental units uh, twenty percent of the residential units can be rental at any time, so no more than twenty percent. Um, so that's the condition that the applicant has proposed for your consideration. And another concern uh, raised at the public hearing was about the naming of it. Um, so we've, we've got commitment from the applicant that the Oakview Estates that's been used for rezoning purpose will not be used. And when it comes to preliminary plat and we take it through the review with EMS, we'll be changing that name as well. So neighborhood meeting uh, as required was held on January twenty one of twenty twenty one. Uh, as I went through the presentation where staff builds, uh, the rezoning request is consistent with our adopted Harrisburg area land use plan and also our U D O. Uh, this was presented to the planning board in November of twenty twenty one. They recommended that council consider approving it. Um, we held a public hearing on both rezoning and annexation at, at the council February fourteenth meeting. So tonight, we're bringing this back to you for uh, final action on both rezoning and annexation. Uh, staff is recommending approval of those um, of both annexation and rezoning request for H twenty twenty one oh one R. Um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. We do have representation from applicant if you have any questions for them as well. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sashil. Are there any questions from council?
Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to the applicant for being willing to listen to concerns that, that council had. So when I look at thirty percent, I want to make sure that at least nine homes will be side loaded and no more than six homes will be rented. I'm reading that right, right, at thirty percent?
The comment then is yes, at least thirty percent will be side loaded.
Um, this is a hard one. The Bloom Two neighborhood is a hundred and one homes. The only way to get into Bloom Two is through the road off of Hickory Ridge. The only way to get into this neighborhood and its construction is through the Bloom neighborhood. Um, I appreciate you're willing to pave the roads. But I know when that traffic forever, how many months, ever how many years is causing a problem to those hundred and one residents in Bloom. It's not going to be anybody out there that's going to have to take the answers. It's staff that's going to have to take the answers. It's council that's going to have to take the answers. Um, we did receive three letters, emails that were in favor of it. They came out of Bloom One. It doesn't even affect, affect Bloom One, right? Um, so they're not having the traffic go through their neighborhood. We did receive one letter against it out of Bloom Two, but they really didn't state why they were against it. It was just like, it's in my backyard, I'm against it. So I'm finding myself very hard when I think about construction traffic begins at seven AM. Schools start at seven AM, students are getting on buses. Schools get out between two and four, construction traffic ends around two and four. Um, some of the Bloom residents, it may not affect, but they all go out. They all go out that one entrance. So it's a hundred and one homes. Um, at least one car per home, two trips a day, two hundred cars that are going to be putting up with the construction traffic. So I, I turn and look over to, to the manager, the assistant manager and to Sashil. What is it that we can do to ensure, to help those residents in Bloom Two that will have to put up with the construction traffic going through their neighborhood? Is there anything we can do?
What can you do to eliminate the nuisance of the construction traffic?
Yeah, I mean, this, look, if it was my neighborhood, I've seen those trucks, how they speed in and out to get to their destination. Is there anything that we can do to help those residents on a get-go?
I mean, in a short answer, no.
Okay.
I mean, that, that construction traffic is going to go down that road. And it's, it's going to go to this neighborhood to, to build behind it now. You know, that's not any different than first thirty lots that got platted in the front of Bloom Two when they built the sixty lots behind it. And it's not any different in Bloom One. And it's not going to be any different in Harmony or Shea. And it wasn't any different for the folks on Hickory Ridge who complained when Bloom was going to come in that Hickory Ridge was being used for construction traffic. So I, I don't think it's a unique problem.
Okay.
But it is a problem. I mean, it's, it's in a growing community where you have construction traffic. Somebody is going to have to deal with that construction traffic while it's there. Now, this traffic shouldn't be leaving the site all day long. It's, they're, they're not, you're not trucking in lots of dirt and hauling out lots of dirt on this site. It's generally a mobilization of equipment in. They stay there and they work, they leave the equipment on site. Uh, but you will have, when they pour curb, let's say, that's a week-long event. You'll have uh, concrete trucks coming in for that work when it's time to pave it finally. That's another one or two week event that, that will require trucks to be in and out throughout the day. But over the scope of a long period of time, it's, it's deliveries. And then you have periods where there's no traffic and then new deliveries and then periods, no traffic. So um, it's, I, I wouldn't want to say, you know, on this, you know, applicant's behalf. It's not going to be daily, every day, but there will be periods where it's heavy. And um, the town doesn't have any, any suggestions or any ability to, to say that's not going to be a nuisance. It is. It's, it's not going to be like living on a cul-de-sac where you have no traffic. Um, but keep in mind, everything that we approve and ever have is that same scenario. This is just two different names. Instead of being phase one, phase two and phase three, this is a new name on a new development. But if this was phase three Bloom, we wouldn't, we wouldn't discuss it.
All right, well, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Um, I believe at our February meeting, we did mention if there was anyone in, that came to the meeting that wanted to speak on this. They were, we would allow them to do that. Is there anyone in the audience today that wants to speak for or against this project? I don't think there was a sign of anything, so.
Applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone online via Zoom that would like to ask any additional questions? Thank you, James. Yes, I'll turn it back to council.
I'll, I'll jump in before we go and throw a motion one way or the other, but um, I wanted to say thank you to the developers of Oakview and Ms. Beeson uh, for moderating the uh, emails and suggestions from council. Uh, you know, when we look at these projects, it's hard to explain to developers some of the things that help sell a project to, to a council. For me, you know, when we look at it, you've got an increased buffer, you've got a greenway, you've got large lots. That was what I was always asking for is a larger lot. Everybody wants to come in and throw a third or less and you guys got it. Thank you. Um, you threw in open space, you, you added a pedestrian bridge. You worked with staff back and forth to massage a plan that maybe was challenging. Um, and at no time were you hell-bent on what you were doing and not willing to listen to others. So thank you for that. I do not diminish, diminish Councilman Delinger's comments with regards to the construction traffic. I, I get it. Rodney and I had a very passionate conversation about it probably last week and, and you know, there are some risks that are involved with construction traffic that I don't know how you put numbers around it. Um, but for me, I think I'm comfortable with allowing it at this point and I will support it moving forward. Um, I just want to say that I do appreciate you guys working with us and providing something worthwhile, but also providing something back to the residents. Because clearly, when you have a greenway and you have pedestrian bridges, it's going to help more than just the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Any other comments?
I'll throw a motion to approve.
Have a motion on the floor from Council to approve. Um, Mr. Russo, is that a second?
Second, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, Sashil.
Madam Mayor, we will need a consist, consistency statement, okay?
To approve the conditional rezoning map amendment for Oakview Residential Subdivision off of Hickory Ridge Road behind Bloom as requested by the applicant for related properly, property in application H two O two one dash O R, O one R.
You want me to recite it?
Please. I'm gonna let you do that.
What do you guys laugh at? Based on the comments that were made at the public hearing and the staff presentation then, and the staff presentation now, um, and with the conditions that were cited in the public hearing and the two additional conditions that we heard about tonight. Uh, the proposed rezoning um, is consistent with the provisions of the Harrisburg area land use plan and is reasonable and in, in the public entry.
Thank you, Rich. Motion to approve the consistency statement.
Most approved.
Thank you. Who second, was that? Thank you, Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimously pass the consistency statement. Thank you, council. Moving on to new business and Bryant is back up to give us the highlights on the consideration of the contract with Martin Starnes and Associate CPAs for the financial auditing services.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, so this is a very exciting new business item that we have here for an audit contract. Okay. All right, so um, an audit is required for the town, an annual audit is. And both of the town's component units are as well. So that includes the Harrisburg Community Youth Association and Harrisburg Business Alliance. So each year, we are required to have these three audits. Um, the financial statements that are produced as a result of the audit must be submitted to the L G C, which is the local government commission of the state treasurer's office by October thirty first each year. And our audits have been performed by Elliot Davis for the past four fiscal years, ranging from eighteen through twenty one. And they are getting out of the governmental auditing game in North Carolina. And so that's what has prompted us to do an R F P for audit services moving forward. So we issued our R F P on January fifth, twenty two. We did direct targeting to some of the firms that I'm familiar with, as well as some recommended from the uh, state treasurer's website, as well as advertised our R F P on state listservs and on our website and social media posts. Um, some of the requirements in the proposal that, that we issued were the type of audit. So we are asking for a financial and a compliance audit of the town's financial statements, the management's discussion and analysis, supplementary, supplementary information and other schedules, and our compliance with the laws and regulations of North Carolina. It also will cover federal and state grant programs in any year where we spend more than five hundred, five hundred thousand in state grants or seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal grants. And that falls under generally accepted auditing standards. Um, this audit will, will cover governmental Um, this audit will will cover governmental business type, each major fund, uh, the aggregate non-major funds and our component units, as I mentioned before. The periods covered by this audit were for three years, so it's ending June thirty of twenty two, twenty three and twenty four. And built into this is an option for us to extend for an additional two years or until a determination is made that we would like to request new proposals. So it's kind of an open ended contract that we will revisit after the first three year period if we need to. Uh, the requirements for the audit that we listed in the proposal were a lot of the technical audit requirements and independence type of issues that we are looking for in the CPA firm. Fieldwork timing was very important that we wanted to make sure that we had our interim fieldwork when we're used to it and our final fieldwork gives us enough time to produce the financial statements and get those to the state a few weeks before that ten thirty one deadline. And that was, that is the most important goal of the audit is to get those financial statements submitted to the state by October thirty first. We do not want to be late on that. So it asked for the firms to provide us with a two part proposal. The first is their firm profile, which uh, addressed a lot of the technical audit requirements and part two was for cost estimates. Uh, so the results of the RFP, we had six firms respond with proposals. Um, those were evaluated by our auditor selection committee, which consisted of me, our financial analyst and Cecile. Thank you, Cecile, for participating in that. Um, so we narrowed that, um, that list of six down to three firms that we considered responsible or capable of providing the quality of services that we desire. And our audit committee recommendation was unanimous, and that was to recommend Martin Starnes and Associates to actually perform the town's audits um, for a couple of years before Elliot Davis came in as well. So here's a look at the audit pricing under Martin Starnes. Um, that is broken up into a few different pieces, the town's base audit uh, for the for the three years that you can see there, the single audit. So that's related to the expenditure of state or federal funds. So that can go away in any one of those years where we don't spend the money. And then H C Y A and H B I, H B A, that is their audit and tax return fee for a total of forty two five in the first year, up to forty four eight in the second year and forty six six in twenty twenty four. For comparison purposes, we paid forty thousand this year for all of our audit and tax returns with Elliot Davis. So that's right in line with the increase that you see from year to year there as well. Uh, so our suggested motion tonight is to approve the contract with Martin Starnes and Associates for the town's audit services for fiscal years twenty two, three and four, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions from council?
So you said you were going to try and negotiate that fee down for H Y A and H B A.
I did say that.
I know. And we're at forty seven fifty, remind me, and I forgot to go look up. How much is the H B A budget and how much is the H Y A budget?
Um, H C Y A receives fifteen thousand a year. That used to be twenty five and twenty seven as most recently is last year. They've stepped their contribution uh, down to fifteen. So that eats up a third of that revenue and H B A, we had previously given six to and anticipated about five thousand in fees. So we have eleven in the budget, eleven two fifty in the budget this year uh, to go towards that. I will say that those two fees came in at fifty two fifty, so I did get them down.
Okay, you did.
I did get them down some, just not to the number that we were looking for. But across the board from all the proposals, this is right where all of them were. It's very hard to do audit and tax work for even the smallest of entities for less than, you know, four or five thousand dollars.
Right. Thank you, Brian.
Any other comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ron. There's a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second? Thank you, Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you, Brian. Our last item under new business is the consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty two budget ordinance amendments for the fire vehicles and Chief Dunn will present that to us this evening.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Lee. I don't have a twenty page PowerPoint, so I apologize for that. In your packet is a pretty good explanation from our logistics division on why we are the situation that we're in. We put together some additional numbers uh, just so you'll have a reference point, but uh, for a few years there in the capital program for vehicles, we were budgeting about forty nine thousand. I think at one time it was forty five thousand, but we raised it up to forty nine thousand. So the last time we really looked at those numbers was for fiscal year twenty, which would have put us looking at vehicles in late twenty nineteen. So if everybody remembers COVID comes along, uh, GM starts making ventilators instead of pickup trucks. So we have a delay there. And that's what drove uh, us to have four vehicles replaced this uh, this current fiscal year. We actually had to push one of those back. So if you look at all the components that are listed, I think Brian was or logistics and Brian were able to put those on on the agenda part there that you can read, but um, in general, we put some percentages together of those components that have increased uh, simply in the past two years. So take, take, for example, the pickup truck itself has gone up about ten percent. Uh, our warning lights have gone up about twenty seven percent. The installation's about twenty five percent. Uh, the cargo is about twenty and so on and so on, with an average of all that of about twenty four percent. So if you take that twenty four percent of the forty nine thousand, that gets you to about sixty thousand and some change. Which is if you look at our capital budget this year, that's what we're, that's what we're budgeting for replacement. So we're taking these, these figures that we know and and plugging them into the dollars that we know today. Um, so yes, simply put, in order to complete the vehicles that we've already purchased, uh, we've already received two of them physically, uh, one of, one additional one has hit the lot. Uh, we don't have possession of it yet and then still waiting on on the fourth vehicle. So uh, in order to finish these, these projects, we'll need these additional funds uh, in the capital program to be able to complete. Questions? Bring it on.
Yes, sir. Can you break that down for me? I mean, so the warning lights on each one, what's the cost for the warnings light lights? Cause I assume it's the same cost on each of them.
Yeah, I think so. So Councilman Smith asked me earlier, um, if you read in the narrative as well that we put out Motorola products that we're using today have been discontinued. Um, anybody that's listening knows Motorola is infamous infamous for uh, phasing out uh, programs and then bringing in new equipment. Uh, I guess that's how you get repeat sales. So we're in that boat now. So the the equipment that we have in the vehicles today will be unusable to transfer to vehicles that we would purchase in the next cycle, say five years down the road. So switching over to these particular lights, we know that the lifespan of those will be probably about twelve years or so. So the next cycle of vehicles, when they're replaced, they'll be able to transfer this equipment. So simply today, we're not able, not able to do that effectively.
So sidesteps, you really need sidesteps on these trucks?
So Osha really loves us not to fall out of trucks. So uh, if you look at the height of these vehicles, you'll know that they'll need steps to be able to get into safely.
And the cargo slide tray?
So equipment uh, takes up the whole bed of of a pickup truck. So um, there's a lot of equipment that back there that's not only reachable when you put the tailgate down, but other equipment is all the way at the front. So instead of crawling through over whatever's in there to get to the back, so trays are used to make it more accessible when you pull them out.
And when I looked on Amazon, those were kind of cheap, right? So you look at, that's the kind of cheap item out of all of that, right? It's cheap, cheap, cheap.
So, but we don't, we won't, don't want to go too cheap to that they fail when you pull them out.
Sure.
So there's a point, there's a point there of capacity. I think we, I don't know what the, what the pound is, but we try to not have them fall apart.
But the cargo slide trays in the current trucks can't go over to the new trucks?
So remember, the reason that we have so many trucks this particular year is because we kept pushing back trucks over a year and then we had COVID where we couldn't get a truck. So the current vehicles that we have in stock will replace uh, an older vehicle, an O eight and O seven vehicle. So these vehicles will be continued to be used for other purposes um, within the system.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Dunn.
And I can attest to this, I can attest to the sidesteps. I appreciate the sidesteps on those trucks very, very much.
Any additional questions? Thank you, council. Oh, I did find the uh, monthly report. You want to hear that?
Absolutely.
So we responded to two hundred and three incidents uh, this past month of February. Uh, roughly highlighting some of those, six of those were structured fires. A hundred and twenty were medical incidents, uh, eight were motor vehicle accidents with injuries, eleven with no injuries. Probably most of those at the intersection that Councilman Patrick referenced earlier. Uh, residential fire alarms was fifteen and commercial fire alarms was five. Uh, a couple of highlights through the year or through the month, uh, we did some facility training at Rowan Cabarrus. I think we talked about in the budget session and a little bit of that. Uh, we did do some, do some mutual aid training with uh, some of our partners, Flow Store and Midland. Uh, we do fit testing, OSHA requires that every year because of our S B S C B A and N ninety five mask. So we completed that. Uh, I think we talked about our physicals. We've actually completed the phase one of that and completed the phase two. So the phase one is blood work. Phase two is actually the physical and those were actually completed um, last week. And that's the highlights of Harrisburg.
Thank you, Chief Dunn.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Any other questions, council? Is there a motion?
Move for approval, Mayor.
I I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Rick.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Rick. There's a motion on the floor to approve the budget ordinance amendments. Is there a second? Maurice Price, um, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Next item is action items. Um, I did make note that masked arms are being revisited as an action item. Were there, were there any other?
Yeah, I've got lots. I've got lots of them here. So I'll I'll hit the high points, uh, uh, busy night, but um, we'll get back with the resident Lucas Court um, and all the residents out there, uh, just as a follow up on on status update. I'll get with staff and we'll get an email out on the status updates for the roundabouts on Stallings Road as well as the uh, traffic signal um, there at Rocky River. And uh, we'll talk internally about uh, how to best present those internal housing numbers and and certainly any of council can circle back. Uh, you know, if they have an opinion on that, but other than that, we'll just uh, get something back uh, to you to to look about putting that on the website. And then uh, Brian will will follow up on the Arbor Day, whether or not however, we're going to do that, whether we're going to roll it over or reappropriate it. Um, but moving that to October, follow up with the lighting and the bicycle uh, accident down there and just get you some better information once I understand uh, the details behind that. And then the uh, masked arms are out and we'll get some more transportation items to present in its place. Uh, that's all I have.
I got one more and it's just because it came up last, last month and force the hearing will begin this month. And and I don't know that we get an answer next month, but Cecile, look back to the week you had. How do we mitigate traffic in these smaller neighborhoods? And then like what we saw tonight, they saw behind Bloom two, this neighborhood, they're crossing another neighborhood. And when they all, they had triggered, but this is independent, this is independent. So they don't try to, but we still get the from it. So I don't know what the answer is and and I would say that I would be entertaining some ideas of how we can change it. We look at our numbers, we reduce our numbers.
And I think it's a nuanced conversation that we can, we can have more in depth, but but I think those numbers aren't captured. Um, they're not captured on the front end, but they are captured when we do other projects. So let's say, you know, this, this thirty um, or so that that you approved tonight that that aren't, aren't a T I A. Um, basically ten percent of your, of the traffic generated, and I would say this uh, total ADTs out of here is going to be, you know, somewhere in that sixty to seventy range that Councilman Dillinger mentioned, about ten percent of that hits your peak hour. And that's really what you end up looking at. So you're looking at really adding six to seven cars during that morning rush, six to seven cars in that afternoon rush. Um, they're at them kind of, they they bell curve out uh, so to speak. Well, when we do, um, but let's say uh, the corner of the opposite corner of Bloom develops and requires a T I A, they'll be required to consider these thirty homes trip generation in their T I A. So everything that exists or is approved that that we know is out there, whether it's built or not, does get folded in to the T I A. So although like Publix, you know, didn't build out for several years, their full build out had to be included on Shea Homes and Harmony. So again, I think it's a nuanced conversation, but you're not completely missing that the reason those limits are set at the seventy or plus homes is because we know that if we say six or seven cars in a peak hour, it just, it never triggers anything as far as an improvement above and beyond what we know empirically needs done. So staff still takes a look at those and says, well, you need stop signs here or you need turn lanes over there or, you know, this road isn't wide enough, so we need to make it uh, meet our town standards. Those are things that that we capture independent of a, of a T I A. And then once we do have projects that are a little bit larger that require the T I A, they count this traffic.
Thank you.
Yep.
No, we do not have a closed session this evening. So is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Thank you, all team. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maurice. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried and meetings adjourned. Thanks, everyone that came this evening.